I'll call this regular meeting of the Dickinson City Council to order. Item one, call to order and certification of quorum.
Councilmember Simpson is absent. Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Here.
Member Brantley?
Here.
Councilmember?
Here.
Decker? Councilmember Litten?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We move on to item two and please rise for the invocation.
Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for journeying us here. God, we pray that you would look over us. God, that you would give us the knowledge and wisdom to lead your people. It's in your son Jesus' name we pray and forsake. Amen.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. First, the United States flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. Thank you. We will move on to item four, Proclamations and Awards, of which we do not have any this evening, which will take us to item five, Announcements and Presentations. Announcements concerning items of community interest. No action will be taken or discussed. Councilmember comments regarding items of community interest in accordance with Texas Government Code, section 551.0415. Item 5A, Council Comments. We'll begin this evening with, let's begin with Councilwoman Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for, thank you to everyone for coming out tonight. We appreciate your time and your input as always, and thank you to those who are joining us online. I want to give a special shout out to our City Secretary, Ms. Anna Earps. Happy birthday and thank you for everything you do to assist the city and me and our fellow councilmembers. So, thank you. Appreciate you so much.
You can sing.
The short version of the happy birthday song. This is your birthday song. It isn't very long. That's it.
Well done.
I attended the Strawberry Festival Sneak Peek on Saturday. This was a wonderful event with several vendors and organizations out there selling and engaging the public. Thank you to the Holy Trinity Episcopal Church for organizing this event and bringing it back to Dickinson. Also attended the True Cost Fall Festival a couple of weekends ago, bought some cupcake goodies and bid on some silent auction items, all for a good cause benefiting the church and the school. MI Lewis needs your help this holiday season. Please considering, please consider offering your time to volunteer in any capacity. They need donations, they need volunteer hours, delivering, organizing, answering phones, you name it. Visit their website or their Facebook page to get in touch with MI Lewis and sign up to volunteer. The Rotary Club of Dickinson Christmas Parade will take place on Thursday, December 8th. The theme this year is Christmas on the Bayou. We hope that businesses, organizations, schools and church groups will consider making a float to participate in this community parade. The Dickinson High School Marching Band has been on fire this season. They have won every contest they have been to this year. They're on track to hopefully make it to state. Go Gator Band. You can watch them perform this weekend in the area marching competition at Challenger Stadium at 10:00 a.m. The Dickinson Historical Society is planning to unveil a plaque about the history of the gazebo at Village Green and the project and the efforts to restore it with the Save the Gazebo Project this Saturday, Saturday, October 29th at 10:00 a.m. at the gazebo. Finally, it's time to register for empty stocking. This organization provides toys and clothes to low-income families with children zero to 12 years old. Registration will be at Dickinson High School in the gym on Monday and Tuesday between 8:30 and 11:30 a.m. You must bring a driver's license, birth certificates, as well of a, as well as a proof of address and a proof of income. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson.
Good evening to everybody and everybody online that's listening. The only thing I have is don't forget the Knights of Columbus Fried Fish Dinner on, it'll be November 4th. So, for some great fried fish, want to be out there. That's it, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Brantley.
Thanks, everybody that's in attendance here, everybody online. Appreciate your attendance. The past couple of weeks, I've had the opportunity, I was invited to speak at the higher-up Texas classes at Dickinson High School, which was a great honor. Also was able to represent the city in the Optimist Club Golf Tournament, held at Bayou Golf Course in Texas City. Had a good time there. This past weekend, I attended, or was a guest judge at the Boots, Boobs and Barbecue Event, held across the street, which was a good time. Also stopped by the Strawberry Festival that Ms. Simpson mentioned, and that was a fantastic event. Lots of fun. Yesterday, I was able to represent the Economic Development Corporation and the Bay Area Houston Economic Partnership Golf Tournament, the Member Appreciation Tournament. Did not do as well in that tournament as we did on Friday, but I guess that's the way it goes. Couple of upcoming things we wanted to remind everybody about. Share Your Thanksgiving at the Dickinson VFW will be held November 19th. It's a community-wide Thanksgiving dinner, so mark that on your calendar, November the 19th. Also Destination Dickinson and the Lighted Christmas Boat Parade will be held December the 3rd, Saturday, December the 3rd. So, if you have a boat, get it decorated and get entered. You can find the event on Facebook. Contact Destination Dickinson to enter the Lighted Christmas Boat Parade. If you would just like to see, this is a, it's a great event, it's lots of fun. If you would like to view the event and see the, all the decorated boats and the lights, you can do that at Dickinson Little League. So, that Dickinson Little League has a viewing area where you can view the entire parade. So, that'll be December the 3rd. So, get signed up for the Lighted Christmas Parade, and that's all I got.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Decker.
Thank you and welcome to everybody that's here. Voted yesterday, was easy to do, especially in the water district. The line was out to the street at the senior center, if that tells you something. But this was a convenient situation back here. Festive lights, we need help. Saturdays and Sundays, eight to three, whatever part of that hours you can be there, it'll help. We, our intention is to put everything out that we've got, that'd be both sides, and manpower we do need. We just have a lot to do. Everything has been repainted, we're putting lights on them now, and any help, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Councilman Litten?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, everybody. I, I visited the Bayou Animal Services Shelter to investigate volunteering and whether they needed anything and observed the installation of their new commercial washer and dryer. So, thanks to everybody who contributed to allow them to get the new fancy and shiny commercial washer and dryer. I also had spoken with Fire Marshal Sean Abello and City Manager Theo Melonson about an abandoned house in my neighborhood. It's been there for about 10 years. They finally posted a notice, I think it was a notice of nuisance, which starts the process, and many of my neighbors are very happy to hear that. So, that's good that we're getting started on some of the abandoned houses in town. I also spoke with Director of IT Renee Valdez about having a meeting with him and Finance Director Harrison Nicholson about several cybersecurity issues, some of which not only comes from my job and my past experience, but also what I learned at TML, some of the courses or some of the seminars I sat in on, including the city's electronic fund transfer policy and creating an inventory of attack vectors such as software, hardware, HVAC, AI cameras and third-party vendors. And lastly, as Councilman Brantley mentioned, he attended the Boots, Boobs and Barbecue Cook-Off Event for breast cancer awareness as well. I want to clarify that because I know this is being recorded. And participated as a food judge and worked with the Public Works Superintendent Alexis Santiago to repair some of their fencing, and that's all I have.
Going the extra mile, I guess. All right. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Glad to have everyone here. Really thrilled about the weather. Hopefully, it's going to hold. It's, it's spring as usual in October, so hopefully we'll have good trick-or-treating weather and all that. I would like to bring up, we are, trick-or-treating is coming up on Monday. Please be aware when you're driving that you are careful as you go out there. Don't, you know, don't, don't have anything happen, so kind of be aware of that. Also, I also went to the Boots, Boobs and Barbecue Event this, this past weekend. It was great. I didn't judge anything this year. Last year, I did mystery, you know, judge's choice though, so I did my, put through my paces, so I don't think I'm entitled to have to judge again the next year. So, but that was, that was a good time. Also, the Strawberry Festival was fantastic. And just to, just to kind of emphasize something that I think a few of my colleagues said, it is a sneak peek, right? Some people were talking about that this is not the full festival. Well, it's, it's not supposed to be. The general goal is that this is something that's going to come back more in the spring, more like we used to see it, is I believe their intention. So, this was kind of a, a get, you know, sneak peek deal, and it was, it was fantastic, though. It was great to see a lot of activity. So, so anyway, that was great. That's all that I have as well. Councilwoman Simpson is not here for the HGC update, but that is available. So, we'll move on and go to the City Manager Update, item 5B.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much. We have a couple of updates from Half and Associate as well as Kendig Keith, so I'm going to keep my comments brief. I do want to let the council know that we are in coordination with the school district on a couple of road closures that are going to affect bus routes in regard to our West Gum Bayou project. We have done most of the detention work and dirt work. Now, we're moving into adding the, the culverts under the roadways to, to help water flow. Those closures this week are Owens Drive and starting on Monday. Once Owens Drive is reopened, California Avenue at 29th Street will be closed for between 30 and 45 days. There's a major, major work that has to be done to do cement work and to, and to add an extra very large covert to, to the infrastructure. So, it's going to be about 30 to 45-day closure. We are working with the school district. We had a great meeting with the Transportation Department, and we have everything coordinated with them, and we've already worked on routes and also worked on where drop-off and pickups will be and how they're going to get to on both sides of California. So, our EMS Director was a part of that meeting, Assistant City Manager was in that meeting, Alexis Santiago, Santiago, our Public Works Director was in there, myself and representatives of the school. So, we have that well coordinated, but I did want to let y'all know that, that that's, that is coming. Also wanted to let you know, I did come back from APA Texas Conference. We had a very great presentation. We're finalizing for public consumption, the 3D modeling and real-time ArcGIS urban module that we showed there. Sue Hogg and Brett did a great job representing the city in that, with, with myself in that presentation. Esri, the, the major company that handles ArcGIS is going to be writing up a really nice article on the work that's being done in Dickinson that will then go through several trade magazines across the country and world about what we're doing, because if I'm not mistaken, the Esri rep stated that we're really only the second city in Texas that's even played with this module and that we're, we're much further advanced along than that other city. So, they would really like to use us as that case study in their trade magazine. So, just be on the lookout. We should be getting a few copies of that in the near future. With that, I'm going to turn over to some updates. And first, I'd like Aaron with Half and Associates will be giving us a little comprehensive plan update to kind of tell everyone where we are and so forth. So, Aaron, thank you.
Thank you, Theo. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the invitation to come before you to give you a quick update. And let me just say right now that... Oh, of course. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Let me just say that we just had a comprehensive plan advisory committee meeting where we did this very presentation. It took almost two hours. I'm going to try to be more concise and, and narrow this down to about 10 minutes. So, thank you for bearing with me. I'm sure you all will have a lot of questions after this, and I'm happy to meet with you all again at your earliest convenience, just so we can, we, we're really interested in getting your feedback on this comprehensive plan to make sure that it is, it is aligned with your preferred vision for the future of Dickinson. Just a little bit about the comprehensive plan structure, as several of you all attended the retreat we had in March, we did go over the existing city. We were doing kind of an existing city, future city approach. The existing city provided all of the background on where the city is at this time. That information will be relegated to an appendix of this comprehensive plan. The future city is what we're really focusing on right now, and then the implementation and intergovernmental coordination part of that program as well. So, comprehensive plans are future-oriented. We're looking out to 2045 as the horizon year. So, we want that to be the beginning of this plan, not forcing you to read stuff that you already know about. Part of the future city report, which I'll, I'll touch on very briefly in the next few minutes, I'll, I'll mention the public engagement program that we've been involved in for several months, a little bit about population projections and the assumptions therein. And then we'll go over some of the key plan elements that we have developed based on what we've heard from a public engagement standpoint. Regarding public engagement, we did have a, we advertised an online community survey that I'm sure many of you all had taken. We did have multiple stakeholder listening sessions. We actually did two rounds of those stakeholder listening sessions to make sure that we were able to maintain the requisite momentum through this planning program. We also had a booth at the Red, White and Bayou Labor Day Event where we got a lot of input from interested people, interested in winning that, that CDO. But that was all very good. We also have done a community open house that was right after a stakeholder retreat that we did at the Murray Restaurant, which was very helpful in getting your feedback. But then also, we have doubled up the number of comprehensive plan advisory committee meetings just because we're very interested in making sure that we have that requisite feedback and input from your community, and we're going to continue to do that. We're hoping to do an online or a kind of a Teams or a Zoom-based meeting on November 1st with a little bit slightly expanded CPAC. So, if you all are interested in participating in that, we would certainly welcome that. What we've heard in, just to summarize very quickly from our public engagement is that people are interested in increased walkability and bikeability. They want to see more active transportation here. To do that is going to mean that we're going to need to increase density potentially from a housing standpoint. So, density begets walkability, if you will. People are also very interested in how can we mitigate flooding in the city? How can we make Dickinson a more resilient community? I know that you all are, are in the process of developing a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Sponge Parks are something that we recommended in Baytown as a means of capturing that kind of flooding, detaining that water, preventing other parts of the community from, from flooding. There's a lot of interest in a more granular kind of retail, commercial environment, particularly in some of the key nodes within, within Dickinson, i.e. Highway 3 and 517, Interstate 45 and 517, and 517 and 646. Those are some of the key nodes that we're looking at, and I'll get into that a little bit more momentarily. From a housing standpoint, making sure that we have a diversity of housing prototypes that will provide equitable, equitability or equity, excuse me, affordability, housing that will appeal to your, to the life cycle of people living here. So, when you are an empty nester or when you're older and you, there's a place where you can move to where you don't have to mow the lawn all the time, as well as for startup families, something that's affordable where they can raise a family before they move into something a little bit larger. As importantly, from a placemaking standpoint, creating the gateways, the, the kind of things that, that provide a sense of place to Dickinson. In a lot of ways, to be honest, there's kind of no there, there when you get there here in Dickinson. So, we want to make sure that Dickinson is a destination, has a variety of things that you can do. And when it comes to that, I've, I've provided this diagram of the powers of 10. This comes from the Project for Public Spaces. But the idea that there are multiple destinations at multiple scales, that's what we want to do. That's what we want to create here in Dickinson, at least from a policy standpoint within this comprehensive plan. When it comes to population projections, we looked at a variety of data sets, and as you can see here, the one, the column on the far right is what we have arrived at. We looked at the compound annual growth rate using of all of these different data sets, and we use those to come up with an average that shows us, and this is all crystal ball gazing to a large degree. Anything could happen between now and 2045, but we're looking at a population growth of about 8,100 persons by 2045. So, that's what we're trying to plan towards. So, that would mean a population of just, just a little bit under 29,000 persons. We have worked with Cortland Holman of the Economic Development Corporation in developing a preliminary growth sequencing plan where we looked at all of the undeveloped and vacant land, as well as the, the land that is currently zoned farm and ranch land. And we started thinking about when will those, those pieces of property be ready for development? And when, when they are, what kind of development will that likely be? So, the outline of these, and I, and you, you'll have this slide for, for looking at later, but the outlines kind of represent the timeframe on a five-year period. The colors represent the kind of land use. So, orange represents a mixed-use kind of development program, which is what you're seeing on, at like 517 and I-45, as well as further east over by Gum Bayou. We have looked at key development nodes as well as sub-development nodes as well, because what we're interested in is providing a more granular kind of, as per what we've heard from a public engagement standpoint, more granular kind of retail experience where you could have some neighborhood commercial, to where you don't have to drive everywhere in order to go shopping, go to the store, go get a cup of coffee, get a beer or whatever. But you could, you could do this within walking distance. And so, we've really been adhering in principle to this whole idea of a half-mile walk shed, which basically is about an eight to 10-minute walk. So, we're trying to focus where can this kind of retail experience happen, where people can walk to these places, and then what kind of development and redevelopment is, is going to be required in order for that to be able to happen? As I mentioned, we have developed a series of plan elements. Each has its own goal and, and representative objectives as well. The green infrastructure, we're looking at ecosystem services, but also parks and recreation. So, there are two goals that kind of fit within that category. But these are going to be the main driving elements of this comprehensive plan. From a community character standpoint, and you guys are well, going to be well-served working with Kendig Keith's collaborative. Lane Kendig was the father of community character-based planning. I worked there for many years and learned a lot from Lane and from Brett. But, so that's how we are focusing on your future land use plan. And so, this is, again, a character-based plan that is focused on key activity centers, secondary commercial, kind of neighborhood commercial areas as well, like along Dietz Road, for example. But really focusing on that kind of city center right at 517 and Highway 3. From our community survey, we heard that most people felt that that's where downtown is in Dickinson. So, excuse me, with each one of these kind of character areas, we have laid out what are the appropriate types of land use, and then from a character standpoint, what is the look and feel of that? So, like, for example, at Highway 3 and 517, we're looking at a Florida-area ratio of 1 to 1.5. So, that would mean basically a two-to-three-story kind of series of structures, very similar to what you might find at the, along the strand in Galveston. But what Kendig Keith will be able to do will be able to take this, these kind of prescriptive covenants and codify that and turn those into regulations and incentives for the development community. So, we've done that with all of our different character areas. Just going through these various plan elements, again, from a placemaking standpoint, we're looking at what does it take to create great places? From a public art standpoint, how do we interweave the landscape elements from window boxes to street trees to those kind of things to create, again, great streets, great gateways, et cetera? From an economic development standpoint, we're looking at the full, all of those elements that contribute to the economic development ecosystem when it comes to shovel-ready sites and buildings, the requisite incentives and business support, the training that you, that your workforce needs to, to increase entrepreneurial kind of activities. And then what is the kind of infrastructure needed for those shovel-ready sites and properties? Housing in neighborhoods, we're looking at what is it going to take to create more diverse housing typologies, as I'd mentioned earlier, to create lifecycle housing, workforce and affordable housing, resilient housing that can withstand flooding, et cetera. But there's this whole concept of missing middle housing to where you can increase density, but you can also retain the character of your existing neighborhoods. So, that then, of course, increases walkability as well. So, there's a lot of different various or diverse types of housing that we can implement, and this all has to be market-driven, of course, but short of developing a whole bunch of multifamily apartment complexes and that kind of thing. As I mentioned, green infrastructure, we're looking at everything from green, from ecosystem services to low-impact development strategies, tools, techniques, to what are some of the key principles and provisions needed when thinking about parks and recreation? We're also looking at growth capacity and infrastructure from a, from a utilities infrastructure, communications infrastructure and public services standpoint. And I, I did not mention earlier, but most of you know, we have a subconsultant, Urban 3, that's onboard, and they are providing a fiscal impact assessment for what will it cost the city to provide all of these additional services to support the kind of growth that we're talking about? And again, 8,000 people sounds like a lot of people, a lot of people. We were just talking about this at the CPAC meeting. But there are ways of, of making that to where with increased densities in certain places, we can, we can assimilate or enable them to live here. Right now, you, if you, based on your current development pattern of your single-family detached kind of development program, you probably won't have the requisite space to accommodate all of those people. But there are ways of, again, increasing density, so this might be more of a reality. Again, we're also looking at transportation. We are preparing a thoroughfare plan, getting ready for the Grand Parkway for expansion of 646 and other transportation kind of improvements. This is just a quick example, and this is a couple of months old now, but what Urban 3 did from a, based on a value-per-acre basis, looking at these two kind of development nodes, recognizing that you're, you're considering tureses for both of these areas, but on a, on a value-per-acre, we are looking, and, and these don't represent multi-story buildings, but they represent how much value there is on a parcel-by-parcel basis. But what kind of property taxes might you be able to anticipate in order to pay for those additional services? So, that's where we're going with this, this kind of additional fiscal impact assessment program. And that's all I have for you right now. I'm happy to expand upon this at your convenience. We're very excited. We're, we're hoping to finish this, this whole project up by the end of the year, but we will definitely want to have another joint workshop with you so we can answer more of your questions. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have right now.
If anyone has any questions, but we might build a, might be a better forum to address any of that later, unless some, anybody has something they really do want to ask, which is fine.
Real quick, walkability versus housing density. Can you expand upon that?
Well, in order, and going back to that kind of half-mile walk shed, in order... Well, in order, and going back to that kind of half-mile walk shed, in order, you, you have to have mixed-use development, of course. But we're thinking that with, with increased density, you will be able to increase that walkability to where you can, you don't have to drive everywhere. So mixed-use, having, developing a mixed-use development program, increasing density a little bit to where, yeah, people can walk to various uses.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. I think that, that's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
What do we have next?
Our next update is from Kendig Keese, the UDC update, and we have Brian Mayberry here from Kendig Keese. Hey, Brian.
Hello, hello. Good, good evening, council members. Let's see. Okay. Brian Mayberry, Kendig Keese Collaborative, thank you very much for having us here today. This is just a very quick update on the Unified Development Code and the Parks Plan that our firm is working on. Aaron gets to do kind of the fun stuff of visioning, and we do the, the boring stuff of, of regulations and, and the thing everybody hates, but we try not to make people hate it too much. I am the, the project manager for this project of creating a Unified Development Code, which I'll explain what that is in a moment. It is, I'll just say now, a set of regulations that relate to zoning and site design and subdivision regulations, signs, landscaping, parking, a lot of things that someone is going to deal with when they're doing a development in the city, and putting them together into one document. And so I'm the project manager for this. Our team is on the, the screen there. But you all are really, in the end, the, kind of the, the shot callers on this project, because this is an ordinance, and so it will come to you all for your final say on what's going to be in it after it goes to a public hearing, to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and after you all hold a public hearing. So it's, it's a very important document. It's of equal importance to the comprehensive plan, it's just different. And one of the ways it's different is if you think of the comprehensive plan that, that Aaron was talking about a second ago, think of that as sort of the menu at a restaurant. And you can think of the Unified Development Code as the cookbook. The menu lays out the options for what you might have for that meal, but the cookbook tells how it's made. You know, there's recommendations that could be in your comprehensive plan about having a more dense or walkable community, but, and those are great goals. But what does that really mean as far as how it gets created? You know, the Unified Development Code would have regulations about density in it, or it would have regulations about making an area more walkable, whether it's like buildings being closer to the street, so you're not walking along a big parking lot. Instead, you've got windows kind of next to you as you're walking by, those kind of things. So it's, it's the regulations that put the vision into reality, really. So I kind of mentioned what a UDC consists of. It's several pieces of your city code put together into one document. The way, reason this is helpful is because it makes the, everything easier to administer on the side of, of staff and to enforce and interpret. And also, for an applicant, for a developer, it serves as a single source, a single document that they can go to that's going to tell them seventy-five percent of what they need to know probably when doing a development in, in the city. It is much more user-friendly than having to deal with a bunch of different chapters of the city code that might be kind of spread all over the place. So some things that a Unified Development Code is not, I've got on the screen, and I'm not going to, not going to read through all of them, but basically it's, really it deals with how land is used, how private property is used, how it's landscaped, how it's parked, how it is signed, how streets are laid out, all those kinds of things. It's not, really doesn't set a property tax, it's not about annexation, it's not about a capital improvement plan to extend infrastructure, it's not site-specific about anything, it's overall citywide rules that apply for development. Several goals for this project. One is to work and produce a, what we call a code framework, or a critique of your existing regulations that would kind of give direction or give you some thoughts of where we're wanting to head when we're writing your updated code. We're also going to be looking at the future land use plan that Aaron was showing and, and making sure that it kind of coordinates with what we're envisioning. We'll be definitely working closely with, with half on that. Consolidating and revising and putting together all your, your pieces of your city code that this relates to, finding the, the items in your comprehensive plan related to land development that, which will be a lot probably, that would kind of get worked into the text of the UDC and be implemented as regulations. And doing all of this with as high of a level of public engagement as we can. We've already, we haven't been working as long as your comp plan people have on this, on our project. We started, I think, end of August, I believe. We had a trip here where we did several stakeholder interviews with different kinds of people who deal with your land use regulations on a daily basis, drove on a tour of the city, did a bunch of other things to try to get and learn more about Dickinson and get educated. And we're going to keep doing that throughout with, you know, we have a steering committee, and a staff committee that's going to be reviewing our work and giving us feedback all throughout. And we'll be, either us or staff will be updating you all on a pretty regular basis as to where this project stands. It'll be a lot of back and forth. It will give staff a draft of what we think the regulations should be. They'll give us feedback on how to improve them. We'll then pass it on to the steering committee, who will give us feedback. We'll make edits and make it even better. So it's a lot of back and forth and improvement on the drafts we work on for this project. There's several moving parts to this, I would say, that are kind of graphically shown here. The big picture for the overall project is a rather short timeline. We've got a lot to do in a year. We want to be done by October of next year. And in between now and then, we've got a few other kind of sub-projects going on that you can see on the, the screen there. A market demand study has been done, and it's kind of in internal review stages right now. It kind of will show over a five-year period the kinds of business demands you're going to see in the city, whether it's retail, office, multifamily, single-family, all those kinds of things. A fiscal impact analysis, which is basically a very complicated spreadsheet that one of our subconsultants is putting together, and it's more than just a spreadsheet, but where staff will be able to put in, let's say someone comes forward with a new residential subdivision that they'd like to do, they'll be able to input the number of lots, the lot sizes, and lot widths, and some other factors like that. And it will be able to say how, how much revenue and property taxes they'll generate for the city versus how much expense it will cost to kind of maintain the infrastructure that serves that development, and give a plus or negative on how it kind of weighs out and measures out. We're also, our firm is working on a Parks, Trails and Recreation Master Plan, doing an inventory of your parks and coming up with some recommendations on how they could be better. And then finally, as Theo mentioned, that final item there is some very cutting-edge work on, on sort of digital renderings and things of how the area around and near this building could look in the future under certain sets of regulations and very advanced work, and we're, we're pretty proud of it. Here's where we are in the overall timeline. We're just at the beginning. Anything anyone sees on this project is just a draft until y'all adopt it. We always like to tell people that. They see, sometimes people see something written out, and they think it's written in stone, but it's not. We can change the draft and then, you know, give it to you all and, and see your thoughts on it. But we're just in the beginning, again, with that finish line being in October of next year. We're going to work on this, this document in two modules. Modules are just pieces of the draft, so we're not giving one whole big document for people to review. It'll instead be basically cut in half into two separate modules. The first one being standards related to like the zoning districts and the land uses and parking and signs and all of those. And then the second one being mostly focused on procedures, like how a rezoning is reviewed and acted on, or how a variance is reviewed and acted on. And that's also where our, our form-based regulations will live. That's sort of related to some of the walkability stuff that, that Aaron was talking about. So just some, maybe some more thinking points, rather than having to answer them right away, if you'd like to, to handle it that way, is, you know, as the, the leaders of the city, you know, the legislative body of the city, you know, just be thinking about what are, what you'd like to see come out of this project. We overall like to have very articulate regulations and, and allow city staff to make as many decisions as, as you all are comfortable with delegating them, as opposed to too many public hearings on different things. And we like to build in flexibility so that, you know, time is money, as any developer or applicant will tell you. And so we like to try to streamline things to the extent that y'all are comfortable. Some things will always have to come to you all, like a rezoning, but there's some things that might not, that you're seeing now that might not need to come to you and that staff could possibly handle under the right criteria and guidance. So that, I think, really basically concludes my presentation, unless you all have any questions or comments you wanted to give to me tonight.
Were there any questions at this point?
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate you.
All right. With that, I was going to conclude the city manager update, because we're still under city manager update, surprisingly. Was going to finish up with it with two quick items. Number one, was going to let, remind council that we are bringing to you guys in the next, about probably the first meeting in December, the three positions for the police department, the detective, jailer, administration sergeant, because that's part of our initiative to have more boots on the ground, you know, being our, our focus. That'll be coming to you guys. The second thing is, you guys, obviously, there'll be, you know, there's an opportunity for you guys, you have employees that either you have direct, that are direct reports to council, but there's also positions that are not necessarily direct reports, but have, you know, they are appointed jointly by the city manager's appointment and approval by council. And, and so I was going to, I was going to offer for you guys, if y'all were ready to start doing evaluations of, of myself, city secretary, police chief, and our municipal court judge, if y'all had a, a, a meeting in mind that y'all would like to be able to, to do that, just so we can have our annual evaluations.
We can kind of get with you after the, after, outside the meeting about when to do it, yeah?
Yeah, but I just, just want to put it on your radar and just kind of think about when you have availability. With that, I'm done with my update.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item six, public comments. Members of the public are invited to give comments at this time, lasting not longer than three minutes. Comments may be general in nature or may address a specific agenda item and should be directed at the entire council, not individual members of council or staff. Any speaker making personal attacks, using vulgar or profane language shall forfeit his or her remaining time and shall be seated. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate. We have three people signed up this evening. The first one is Joan Malmroes.
Hi.
You know the drill. Give your name and address, if you would.
My name is Joan Malmroes. I'm the director of the Dickinson Historical Society. My address is 218 FM 517. So I just wanted to reiterate that on this Saturday, as Councilwoman Simpson said, we are inviting everyone to unveiling of the plaque that we're putting up at the gazebo on Highway three at 10:00 a.m. this Saturday. This was just to summarize all the work, the rehab that was done on the gazebo. I also wanted to invite the council to our membership reception, which is Saturday, November 5th. It starts at 6:30. I know many of you have attended these in the past. This is the meeting for our members and our council. We like to designate landmarks here in Dickinson. We have two more landmarks that we want to designate, and we're going to also dedicate a vintage railroad crossing that we're putting up at the depot from the original GH&amp;H line. And then the last thing I just wanted to tell the council about is that on December 17th, we are going to be participating in Reis Across America. This is the event where you put Reis on veterans' graves. As you may know, the Historical Society has taken over the management of the city cemetery. So we're going to be putting Reis there, as well as at the Episcopal Cemetery, right next door, and the Magnolia Cemetery. If you look on our Facebook page, if you want to contribute to that, we would welcome that. Again, that event is going to be on December 17th, 11 o'clock at the cemetery. And the VFW and the ROTC people are going to be helping us then, too. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, next up, we have Dean Delleri.
Dean Delleri, 650 North FM 646. Good evening. I don't, I don't want to be tone-deaf to any of the presentations that we just heard up here, but I am here once again to clarify the mischaracterizations from the SUP extension hearing last month. As a refresher, we're developers of the Boat and RV Storage Project located on 646, just south of Dickinson Bayou. To remind everyone, this project was approved, I want to repeat, was approved by city council in a five-to-one vote last year. Additionally, it was, it was approved by planning and zoning three different times and the EDC. Just to rehash, we didn't cause any of the delays, or really aren't the culprits for the extension requests. City turnover has been really high over the last year, like we mentioned last week or two weeks ago, which means there's been a lot of confusion and inconsistency. Since we started drawing the plans last year, city hired a new senior planner, a new building official, a new fire marshal. On top of that, we were delayed an additional 45 days back in May and June of this year due to a planning and zoning meeting cancellation. We've really been on top of this project since the beginning. We've done everything the city has asked of us and even gone above and beyond. Passed out multiple permit plans so people could speed up the process. We hired a third-party fire engineer on our own dime to give this council and the fire marshal additional comfort that we're following the International Building Code to a T. Council, at this time, there really isn't a better use for this property. I challenge all of you to drive this part of 646 or allow us to take you on a tour. It's a five-lane highway with a speed limit of 55 miles an hour, and there are no water and sewer utilities. We've asked several larger commercial developers if they have any ideas here. And we did this last year as part of the SUP process as well. And all of them told us it's really a non-starter without water and sewer utilities. That being said, we just had a very constructive meeting with Theo, Cortland and the city attorney. Please be open to utility expansion to allow for fruitful development in this corridor. Let's put pressure on WCID and other entities to do so. Otherwise, you're holding these landowners hostage. Council, you have to understand our frustration and feeling of mistreatment. Order events happen like this. Council approved the SUP last year. As a result, we bought the property and then spent real dollars designing this project, and now you've reneged on that. This just isn't right, and this is not how you should treat small business owners in your community. There are damages, real financial damages. Now, Theo and team have opened the door to creative conversations, which is really awesome. So please show some compassion and work with us. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have Matt Werner.
650, 646. Greetings again, city of Dickinson. I will be brief since my partner just presented. I do want to start today, though, with the mission statement of the city, which is to promote a wholesome and vibrant community for all residents and businesses. I stand before this council asking to be treated with the wholesome qualities that are promised in this mission statement. Furthermore, I want to highlight one of the core values in the SHINE acronym, which you can see on the wall there. In this case, the I in SHINE stands for integrity, which promises to promote transparent communication, to instill trust and camaraderie in the community. I know the city council has changed in the past year, but a lack of communication and opaque building permit application process has harmed our ability to establish a vibrant business. I want to emphasize that this is 100% our own personal money, which we invested on good faith based on this council a year ago. We prepared to spend significantly more money until our small business dreams were crushed a month ago. In spite of this, we want to work with the city. We want to find a solution that accomplishes the items laid out in the mission statement. We look forward to the chance to have a similar positive dialogue with this council that we had with Theo, Cortland and Justin prior to this meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to item seven, the consent agenda. The following items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion on these items unless a council member requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent agenda and discussed after the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion approved by Councilman Wilson, a second by Councilman Brantley. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That'll move us on to item eight, public hearing and action items from public hearing. Item 8A, conduct a public hearing concerning the creation And we will convene this open hearing at, this public hearing, excuse me, at 7:30, 7:54 p.m. I wish it was 7:30. And we will turn it over to staff presentation.
Mayor, council, just going to introduce Travis James with TXP, you know, a TERZ connoisseur, if you will. Travis?
Great. Thank you all. Haven't heard that one before for a presentation, but Travis James, it's good to be here again. In your packet, you have a copy of the preliminary TERZ project and finance plan. As we talked about in July, it's a seven-step process to create a TERZ. We are on step number four, which is you have a public hearing, you prepare a preliminary finance and project plan, and then you all vote on an ordinance. And that puts the TERZ in place. That establishes the number of years, the tax increment, the geography, and the number of board members. So we are on that step. Once this process is done, assuming you approve these, it takes two readings. We're here in October, kind of November, December, January, you all will appoint board members to this TERZ. I will work with staff to create what's called the final project and finance plan. That TERZ board votes to approve it and it comes back before you one more time. The final plan looks similar to what you have in the packet. That's a template I've used throughout the state. Your attorneys looked at it. It complies with state law with all the different items that are required to be in that plan. That's why it's written in that format, so you can check the box that all of the things required need to be in that plan. And this TERZ number one is for the downtown area.
All right. Thank you. We have no public comments signed up on this item this evening, thus there's no staff applicant rebuttal, and we will adjourn the public hearing at 7:55 p.m. And move on to item 8B, consideration and possible action of an ordinance of the city council, the city of Dickinson, Texas, creating the reinvestment zone number one, city of Dickinson, the zone, over an area of approximately 177.4 acres, generally located along east FM 517 and Highway three in Dickinson, Galveston County, Texas, designating the boundaries of the zone, creating a board of directors for the zone, establishing a tax increment fund for the zone, making certain findings related to the zone, providing for repeal, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion approved by Councilman Brantley, a second by Councilman Wilson. Is there any discussion? Hearing not, we'll take this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item 8C, conduct a public hearing concerning the creation of a tax increment reinvestment zone to be named the reinvestment zone number two, city of Dickinson, the TERZ number two. We will convene this public hearing at 7:56 p.m. and we'll turn it back over.
Again, Travis James with TXP, your TERZ consultant. This is what we're, this is what we're, yeah, we're referring to as the IH45 TERZ. Same number of years, same tax increment. We'll have a separate TERZ board. You can appoint the same members to sit on both boards if you so choose, but it will have a separate board, posting requirements, public notices, all those kinds of things. Again, same process. I'll come back to you at the same meeting. We'll meet with the TERZ board on the same day, get those final project and finance plans approved. They come back to you for final approval. And that will try to wrap up in January.
All right. Thank you. And there's no public comments or rebuttal, so we'll adjourn the public hearing at 7:57. And move on to item 8D, consideration and possible action on an ordinance of the city council of the city of Dickinson, Texas, creating the reinvestment zone number two, city of Dickinson, the zone, over an area of approximately 355.5 acres, generally located along Interstate Highway 45 in the city of Dickinson, Galveston County, Texas, designating the boundaries of the zone, creating a board of directors for the zone, establishing a tax increment fund for the zone, making certain findings related to the zone, providing for repeal, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Brantley to approve, a second by Councilman Decker. Is there any discussion? Hearing not, we'll take this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, executive closed session. The city, item nine A, the city council will meet in a closed session pursuant to Title V, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code for the purpose of economic development discussions under Section 551.087, consultation with legal counsel under Section 551.071, and deliberations on rural property under Section 551.072. We will adjourn into executive session at 7:58 p.m.
Item, uh, ten, ten A, Consideration of Special Action Concerning Matters Discussed in Executive Session. There are no matters, which takes us to item eleven, adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Is a motion to adjourn by Councilman Brantley, second by Councilman Wilson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at eight something. I think eight thirty-three.
Eight thirty-four P.M. Thank you.